Call the regular City Commissioning Order. We please rise for the dedication for the pledge. Let's get back up. Our dedication is followed by the pledge of allegiance to our country. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity that we have together here this evening. Lord, we ask that you bless this City Commission and you give us the knowledge and the wisdom you want us to have to make the decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens. Lord, this time of year, we are just have to look around and realize how blessed we all are. And we are so blessed to have the city staff that we have. So please watch over and guide us all through this. For all these things, we ask you with precious heavenly name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to welcome all here this evening? First on the agenda this evening, approval of amendments from our regular meeting on November the ninth. They have been distributed. Are there any additions, solutions, or corrections? Very good, ma'am. We need a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call the favor of City five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First reading in public hearing, propose ordinances. Orders twenty-four dash oh one.
Yes, sir. Orders twenty-four dash oh one, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, vacating a portion of the platte dedicated utility and drainage easement over a portion of lots thirteen and fourteen of Winter Garden Commerce Center, Phase One, according to the platte that is recorded in the platte book seventy-two, page one-three-three and one-three-four of the public records of Orange County, located at six-eight-zero and six-nine-zero Garden Commerce Parkway owned by IBI Properties LLC, as more particularly described herein, provided for an effective date and recording.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The first item is a request for approval of an easement vacation for the subject property located at six-eighty and six-ninety Garden Commerce Parkway. The property is currently vacant and the applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of their platte's side interior drainage and utility easements to develop the two parcels, two parcels as one combined subject property with a commercial warehouse and office building. The site plan and property, they were approved by the City Commission on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and staff has reviewed this application and we recommend approval of ordinance twenty-four dash oh one. Have you answered questions?
Okay. Questions from the Commission? This is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash oh one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Call the favor of City five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll do ordinance twenty-four oh five, twenty-four oh six, and twenty-four oh seven.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-four dash oh five, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately one point five eight plus minus acres, located at nine-nine-five Tildenville School Road, west of West Plant Street, south of Tildenville School Road, east of Tildenville School Road, and north of Brick Road into the City of Winter Garden, Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction oversight property, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero six, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Winter Garden Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately one point five eight plus minus acres located at nine-nine-five Tildenville School Road, west of West Plant Street, south of Tildenville School Road, east of Tildenville School Road, and north of Brick Road from Orange County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, rezoning approximately one point five eight plus minus acres located at nine-nine-five Tildenville School Road, west of Plant Street, south of Tildenville School Road, east of Tildenville School Road, and north of Brick Road from Orange County A dash one Citrus Rural District to City R dash one Single Family Residential District, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry for making you do this, Kirk.
No problem.
This is a request for annexation for a property located at nine-nine-five Tildenville School Road. This property is one point five eight acres in size and is owned A-one Citrus Rural District in Orange County. The applicant is requesting annexation to the city amendment to the future land use map to designate this property as Low Density Residential and rezone the property to R-one Single Family Residential District. The applicant is requesting annexation to receive city services to the existing house. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of ordinances twenty-four dash oh four, twenty-four dash oh five, and twenty-four dash oh six. Have you answered any questions?
Questions from the Commission?
No, just thanks to the city staff for working so diligently with our good neighbors here. They've lived there for many, many years. Know they're excited to come in to the city, so we'll be excited to make that motion when it's appropriate.
Okay. Any other questions? For a little piece? Okay. This is a public hearing, so we will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinances twenty-four zero five, twenty-four zero six, and twenty-four zero seven. Second reading of public hearing on January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call the favor of City five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll read ordinances twenty-four oh two, twenty-four dash oh three, and twenty-four dash oh four.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero two, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately zero point five four plus minus acres located at nine-eight-five Tildenville School Road, west of West Plant Street, south of Tildenville School Road, east of Tildenville School Road, and north of Brick Road into the City of Winter Garden, Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction oversight property, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero three, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Winter Garden Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately zero point five eight plus minus acres located at nine-eight-five Tildenville School Road, west of Plant, west of West Plant Street, south of Tildenville School Road, east of Tildenville School Road, and north of Brick Road from Orange County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero four, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, rezoning approximately zero point five four plus minus acres located at nine-eight-five Tildenville School Road, west of West Plant Street, south of Tildenville School Road, east of Tildenville School Road, and north of Brick Road from Orange County A dash one Citrus Rural District to City R dash one Single Family Residential District, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for annexation of a property located at nine-eighty-five Tildenville School Road, which is located directly adjacent to the previous item, the previous property. This property is point five four acres in size and is owned A-one Citrus Rural District in Orange County. The applicant is requesting annexation to the city amendment to the future land use map to designate this property as Low Density Residential and rezoning of the property to R-one Single Family District. The applicant is also requesting annexation to the city to receive services to the existing house and lot. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of ordinances twenty-four dash zero two, twenty-four dash zero three, and twenty-four dash oh four. Have you answered any questions?
Questions from the Commission?
I'm anxious to look. I'd have a vote.
How do they have A-one agricultural exemption?
I'm not, I'm not sure. They, I know their future land use designation in the county is, is Low Density Residential, so I don't think the zoning and the future land use are congruous. So it probably just was like that for another few years and they never changed it.
And then an orange grow up there in seventy years.
Right.
So it's curious.
I'm not sure, yeah.
Okay.
I'd have to ask for a shot.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so we will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four zero two, twenty-four zero three, and twenty-four zero four. The second reading of public hearing, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve a second. Call the favor of City five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second reading of public hearing, propose ordinances. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-six, twenty-three dash twenty-seven, and twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-six, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately zero point one one plus minus acres located at five-forty Oak Street, west of Oak Street, south of Magnolia Avenue, east of Ninth Street, and north of East Story Road into the City of Winter Garden, Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction oversight property, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Winter Garden Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately zero point one one plus minus acres located at five-forty Oak Street, west of Oak Street, south of Magnolia Avenue, east of Ninth Street, and north of East Story Road from Orange County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-eight, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, rezoning real property generally described as approximately zero point one one plus minus acres located at five-forty Oak Street, west of Oak Street, south of Magnolia Avenue, east of Ninth Street, and north of East Story Road from Orange County R dash two Residential District to City R dash two Residential District, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
This is a request for annexation for a property located at five-forty Oak Street. The property is point one one acres in size and is owned R-two in Orange County. The applicant is requesting annexation amendment to the future land use map to designate this property as Low Density Residential and to rezon the property to R-two Residential District. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval and adoption of ordinances twenty-three dash twenty-six, twenty-three dash twenty-seven, and twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
Any further questions from the Commission on this? Okay. Once again, this is a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. You have to come up there and give an amendment, please.
If I just have a question, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
On that field, I live in Winter Garden Greenway. I just had a question. It looks like these are just two houses in that little corner. Does that mean the rest of that corner is still Orange County? And are there any plans to annex this, annex that whole corner? That's my question.
So this particular block is, some of the properties are in the city, some of the properties are in Orange County, some of the properties a little bit further east are also in Orange County. At the current time, this is not a focus of annexing the entire block, but in the future, that, that may be a target area for annexation.
Anyone else? With that, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Orders twenty-three dash twenty-six, twenty-three dash twenty-seven, and twenty-three dash twenty-eight with staff recommendations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call the favor of City five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries unanimously.
Orders twenty-three dash twenty-nine, twenty-three dash thirty, and twenty-three dash thirty-one.
Yes, sir. Orders twenty-three dash twenty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately zero point one one plus minus acres located at five-forty-six Oak Street, Oak Street, west of Oak Street, south of Magnolia Avenue, east of Ninth Street, and north of East Story Road into the City of Winter Garden, Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction oversight property, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-three dash twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-three dash thirty, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Winter Garden Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately zero point one one plus minus acres located at five-forty-six Oak Street, west of Oak Street, south of Magnolia Avenue, east of Ninth Street, and north of East Story Road from Orange County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-one, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, rezoning real property generally described as approximately zero point one one plus minus acres located at five-forty-six Oak Street, west of Oak Street, south of Magnolia Avenue, east of Ninth Street, and north of East Story Road from Orange County R dash two Residential District to City R dash two Residential District, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for annexation for a property located at five-forty-six Oak Street, which is located directly south of the previous item on this agenda. The property is point one one acres in size and is owned R-two in Orange County. The applicant is requesting annexation in the city amendment to the future land use to designate this property as Low Density Residential and rezoning the property to R-two Residential District. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval and adoption of ordinances twenty-three dash twenty-nine, twenty-three dash thirty, and twenty-three dash thirty-one.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Commission?
Just, this would be a good area to target as we did. There's a lot of confusion, administrative issues in that area. Thus, this one, this one created a little bit of a problem for us.
And might just be high on the list of on-lease annexed areas.
Yeah. Yeah. Be a good one.
Let her daughter push some of those.
Yeah.
Through.
I would say that she's saying.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions? This is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Make a motion with per ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-nine, twenty-three dash thirty, and twenty-three dash thirty-one with staff recommendations.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All that are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Regular business, resolution twenty-three dash oh four.
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty-three dash oh four, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, declaring the qualifying results of the twenty-twenty-four general election for districts two, three, and four, and the candidates duly elected to office by virtue of no opposition and the candidates eligible to run for districts two, three, and four each for a four-year term to be held on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
City Carter.
Thanks, Kirk.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Resolution twenty-three oh four, as Kirk said, declares the results for the candidate qualifying ending unknown November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The resolution contains the qualifying results for Commissioners District two, three, and four. And for the record, I'd like to read those results into the record. There were three qualified candidates for the seat of Commissioner District two, Danny Joe Colbertson, Jr., Eliot R. Jones, Ron Mueller. There were three qualified candidates for Commissioner District three, Chloe Johnson, Karen McNeil, Mark A. Maschel, who withdrew his candidacy, leaving only two qualified candidates to run for the District three seat. There was one qualified candidate for Commissioner District four, Colin Sharman, who was unopposed. And in light of these results, there will be an election on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, excuse me, to determine those to be elected to District two and District three. And a runoff election has been scheduled for April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, if necessary. And in light of this, the, this election would also complete our transition for all seats to that four-year term. And with that, staff would recommend approval of Resolution twenty-three oh four. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the Commission? And we need a motion. To approve.
Second?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
We have a motion and we have a second. All that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve final platte for property at twelve-hundred Daniels Road.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a request for final platte approval of the Daniels Road Business Park located at twelve-hundred Daniels Road. The project received preliminary platte approval from the Planning and Zoning Board on March seventh. The applicant is proposing to platte a property with one commercial lot with associated easements as well as stormwater retention and detention drives. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of final platte. Any more questions?
There's a couple of businesses that have opened up there, but obviously the anchor has not. Does it make any difference whether we approve or not approve this as far as getting some action, some movement there?
The approval of the platte will allow CEOs of the building. So for, for some of those tenants, not the anchor tenant necessarily, we're not sure where they are in their process. But the other tenants, they will be able to move forward getting certificates of occupancy so they can build it up, so you don't have a vacant building. So that will help the platte.
Because without that, I mean, you know, it's going to be difficult. I would think with the others, so.
Yeah, last we heard, they, they signed a lease agreement and I guess they're just, they need to build out, but we have no time for that.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission? We need a motion.
Move to approve the final platte.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Recommendation to approve purchase of fifty-nine Meraki access points with associated accessories.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This purchase will allow the city's IT department to begin updating our current wireless network infrastructure, providing more reliable wireless communication experience and future scalability. These items are included in this fiscal year's budget and with that, staff would recommend purchase of fifty-nine Meraki wireless access point with associated peripherals and licensing in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And that's what was in the budget?
Yes, sir. The, the budget amount was around.
Okay. Questions from the Commission?
No, just a couple of comments. First, Director, nice job on this. You got a good price on this, got this, and just generally, since you stepped into this role, we've moved more to cloud infrastructure, you've become more secure, you invested office three sixty-five, you had crowds right, just continue to really elevate, so great job in your leadership role. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the fifty-nine Meraki access points, I can't see the word, for seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Winter Garden and Orange County for transfer of retention ponds located at fourteen forty-one Basin Street and Tea Garden Court. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. There are two existing stormwater ponds and piping located at fourteen forty-one Basin Street, and the other is adjacent to Tea Garden Court and are currently in the Orange County properties. And in this interlocal agreement, we'll transfer those properties from Orange County to the City of Winter Garden. The assignment of these properties to the city from Orange County will give the, the city more control over the maintenance frequencies. Maintenance frequency. Staff would recommend signing the interlocal agreement to transfer the retention ponds from Orange County to the City of Winter Garden. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Did they bring them up to a level that we expect before they're transferring it? Or because in the past, we got retention ponds, it seems like that, you know, they would have to bring the, take care of the retention ponds, mow and clean it out, and then we'd take it.
Yes, sir. The one by Tea Garden is in great shape. The homeowners have been maintaining that. And the one on Basin Street, we'll make sure that gets addressed before we take it.
I agree we need to take ownership of them, just seeing what we get out of the county to help pay for it so much. Okay. Any other questions from the Commission?
I know you've done a lot of work over there helping the residents with some of the water problems that they've had, and we walked it before and it looked like it was in pretty good condition, but I don't know how cleared out this water. We all churned it. Big difference, but.
Make a motion. Yes, ma'am. I thought you have to be moving right to the motion.
Make a motion. For the interlocal agreement.
Okay, so we have a motion approved. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve purchase order of Middlesex paving. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The annual street resurfacing project for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four consists of milling and resurfacing city roadways that are beyond their service life. The attached maps show the roadways and subdivisions that are to be resurfaced. They are Business Park Boulevard and a portion of Story Road that's adjacent, East Bay Cove, Regency Oaks Phase One, Tuscany Phases One and Two, Corcino Place, Valencia Shores, and a portion of Florida Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue, and Winter Street. We have also included the left turn lane on the Storm Brook West Parkway that allows travel under the four-twenty-nine overpass to Reeves Road. Staff would recommend approving the PO with Middlesex Paving LLC for resurfacing services in the amount of one million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the Commission?
Mayor, thanks for putting the maps in.
Valencia Shore is going to be very happy. Thank you. I think everybody here.
We need a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve proposal award construction services for turn lanes at Tilden School Road.
Yes, sir. The city received two proposals on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three for the Plant Street and Tildenville School Road Intersection Improvement Project. The cost tabulation of the two proposals are as follows. Southern development and construction, SDC, is three million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Cap Care Construction Company was three million, seven hundred and eleven dot thousand, nine hundred and ninety and fifty cents. And with that, southern development and construction has been recommended as the lowest responsive responsible proposal. Staff would recommend approving SDC's proposal and award the construction services for the Plant Street and Tildenville School Road Intersection Improvements Project, including a ten percent contingency in the amount of three million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll tell you the truth, I had a heart attack because of this. We're putting in the turn lane.
Yes, sir. We have three.
I agree with number thirty, number thirty back there. Wish we had a turn lane, but if I extra five minutes or anybody extra five minutes, four million dollars, I tell you, that's a.
We're making a big traffic circle with two lanes and gold roads and.
We have very limited vital man at it.
Not enough room for roundabout, know that.
Sure.
If you put a left turn arrow in, that's, doesn't really matter because somebody's going to want to go straight and I'm back there, but.
It was just a big price tag.
It is.
But it's low as bit.
Yes. Questions from the Commission?
What factors into that? I know with roads and I know materials, but is a lot of the utilities that happen.
Yes, ma'am. There's, there are a ton of utilities in that intersection. And it's just going to be very tight to work. It's going to take a lot of meat and some traffic and, and it's a very congested area. It's probably going to take a little bit longer than it normally would.
How long will it take, sir?
I, I have to go back and look, but I think it's three hundred and thirty days until substantial. And then another thirty for finals.
When are we starting midsummer? There's a school.
No, we were going to try and start.
In one year, it's not going to matter. You got Tildenville, you got Lakeview, and you got Oakland Charter. Have you called Kathy Stark?
I have not.
See if they want to chip in. Oakland Charter is getting it off from the other way.
I will say that SDC did the Marsh Road project and they finished that a few months early.
Yeah.
So I anticipate they're going to do the same bank of jobs. It's needed. It was just a big price tag.
Yep.
With that, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to over to contract services to southern development construction, SDC, amount of three million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-six, which includes ten percent contingency.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call the favor of City five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Finishing the annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for approval at the fifth annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Parade and Celebration in downtown on Monday, January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. The parade will start at the corner of Dillarddale Plant heading down Plant Street to the Farmers Market Pavilion, where there will be music, entertainment, free games, crafts for children, along with several food and craft-themed vendors. Plant Street will be closed until the parade concludes at twelve PM and parts of Tremaine and Lakeview will be closed until around five PM. Staff recommends approval of the Martin Luther King Junior Day Parade and Celebration.
Questions from the Commission? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve this special event, this fifth annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade on January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Please be close.
Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Madam, citizens of Winter Garden.